Waycross presents an election forum for Hamilton County Commissioner. There are six candidates running for two seats. They are, in alphabetical order, Denise Dreehouse, Kyle Dupler, Adam Kaler, Leandro Yambi, Jonathan Pearson, Alicia Reese.
Good evening and welcome to the election forum of Waycross Community Media. I'm Kurt Rado, your host, Government Programming Corner, Waycross Community Media. Now, voting is Tuesday, November 5th. Early voting starts on October the 8th. The last day to register or update your name or address is October 7th. To get details, go to votehamiltoncountiohio.gov. Now, if you're watching this program live here on October the 1st, you can participate. Local residents are invited to submit their questions to candidates, which can be emailed to live@waycross.org. Now, you can send the email during this live broadcast, but there are a couple of rules. Questions must be phrased for all the candidates to respond. Email questions must include the resident's name, address, and community. Details will not be shared on the air. We'll only read the first name and street. For example, our question is from Mary on Waycross Road. And to see this broadcast for more information, you can go to waycross.tv. We begin tonight, as we mentioned, we have six candidates for Hamilton County Commissioners. Four are in the studio tonight. They are Denise Dreehouse, Kyle Dupler, Adam Kaler, and Alicia Reese. We invited Jonathan Pearson and Leandro Yambi were invited, but were not able to participate. However, Mr. Yambi was able to pre-record his two-minute opening statement, in which we will hear as of right now.
Hello, my name is Leandro Yambi, and I am running for Hamilton County Commissioner as a proud member of the Libertarian Party of Ohio. As a Libertarian, I always ask myself two sets of questions anytime I'm considering a tax, a new regulation, or a new government service. The first is, does the free market provide this service? If so, it really shouldn't be taxed. It should be regulated as little as possible. And certainly, the government does not need to get into the business of providing this service. A great example is this past year, the Argentinian people elected the first Libertarian president in world history. And since the beginning of 2024, President Javier Millay has completely deregulated the real estate industry. Housing and rental prices have plummeted by over 30% in the capital city of Buenos Aires. The next question I ask myself is, are we able to provide a service that is not provided by the free market at the lowest cost taxpayers? Are we able to provide the greatest good to the greatest number of people? And are we able to prevent the weaponization of this service so that politicians can't use it against certain voters and for other voters? At the end of the day, why you should vote for me is that I believe in you. And the reality is, is that no politician on the ballot this November knows you or your family. So how can we do what is best for you? How can we decide what is best for you to spend your money on? So this November, please vote for Leandro Yambi, Hamilton County Commissioner, as well as any other Libertarian candidates on the ballot, because we believe that you are the best decision-maker for you and your family, how to spend your money and how to live your life. Thank you. God bless you, and God bless Hamilton County.
We now begin with our two-minute opening statement from our panel here. It's in alphabetical order, so we begin with Ms. Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Kurt, and thanks for the team at Waycross for hosting the forum this evening. So I am running for the county commission simply to continue to do the good work that we've been doing at the commission. When I got to Hamilton County, we were broke. We did not have enough money to really run the government. And so, we were able to stabilize that. We have a structurally balanced budget now, and I'm very proud of that achievement. The reason that matters is because we can now invest in core services for your viewers and the constituents of the county. And when I talk about core services, I'm talking about 911 operators, talking about the deputies down at the jail, talking about the women and men that go out into the community and make sure kids are safe in this community. So it's really important that we retain and recruit individuals into those positions. The other thing that we've been able to do is invest in things in the county. So big projects that bring economic development to the county, but also smaller grants that go out to all 49 jurisdictions in Hamilton County to reinvigorate the business districts in partnership with those jurisdictions to make sure that we are part of what helps them thrive, because when they thrive, we thrive. And we've also got historic investments in roads and bridges in Hamilton County, Western Hills Viaduct being one of those. And some of the communities that have benefited from the grants include Mount Healthy, Colrain, Forest Park, you know, many of the jurisdictions throughout the county. In addition to that, we've made sure that everybody is included in the growth of the county. And so, we've done a disparity study in Hamilton County to ensure that inclusion when it comes to hiring and contracts and the other work of the county. That includes women and girls, of which I am the founder of the Hamilton County Commission on women and girls. And we've been focused on issues related to period products and pay equity and domestic violence. I can see that I'm running out of time, and so I'm going to reserve the rest of my comments for my closing statement. Thank you.
Mr. Dupler, your two-minute opening statement.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kyle Dupler. I'm running to give voters a choice outside of the two-party system. I'm a member of the Libertarian Party, and the reason you don't see smaller regional and local political parties on your ballot is because Ohio law does not allow them to be recognized without statewide signatures and candidates for both president and governor. We hear that change to the two-party system needs to start small and local, which is very reasonable. The Ohio Legislature thought otherwise when they changed the law in 2013. Many candidates are forced to run as independents without the truth in advertising that comes with putting your party name on the ballot. Yet, some local candidates don't even advertise the name of their party on their campaign material. This highlights the uphill battle that citizens have to take to find representation outside the established and entrenched parties. My vision for Hamilton County is to reduce or definitely not increase taxes, try to reduce spending, avoid debt, and promote development through things like zoning reform. Instead of big development projects that favor existing or that favor new developers that come in to the county, things like zoning reform will help smaller businesses be able to start out and for new creative and dynamic growth within the county.
Thank you, Mr. Dupler. Now, your two-minute opening statement, Mr. Kaler.
Sure. Thanks a lot, Kurt. So my name's Adam Kaler. I could actually tell you a little story about me. So I've been in Cincinnati my entire life, grew up in Price Hill and Westwood. We moved around a lot. We didn't have a lot of money. Somehow, my mom raised us on $9,000 a year. No furniture in our house. I mean, no outlook for the future. Luckily, I had a godmother who was a Cincinnati teacher, and she encouraged my brother and I to go to the School for the Creative and Forming Arts downtown Cincinnati, which that school, I would say, is one of two schools in the Cincinnati Public School System where kids have a goal in their life. They know what they want to do. I went to school with people who wanted to be ballerinas, that wanted to be musicians, that wanted to be, and many of them have done it. I went to school for art. Now, I own an advertising agency. I've owned that agency for a little over 14 years now. That led me into a startup with the help of groups like Alloy that the county funds. I personally would love to see more money in the county allocated to programs that are going to generate economic activity, the same way our company did. I was involved early on with this business. We were able to grow that business into a very, very large, large business, hiring thousands of people over the years now, sold to Zillow. And from that, we've had five or six employees go off and actually create more businesses. It brought a lot of economic attention to the city of Cincinnati from coasts. So you didn't have a whole lot of venture money coming in to the center of the country from the coast. Now Cincinnati is more visible because of efforts from the people that worked with me, efforts of the Cincinnati startup community, and things like that. I want to bring those opportunity to inner-city kids like me who didn't really have a direction, didn't know what they wanted to do, but I want to, I want more opportunities like that for young people.
Two-minute opening statement, Ms. Reese.
Yes, thank you for hosting today. I run on a theme of One Hamilton County. I've served at the city level at Cincinnati City Council on the Finance Committee, at the state level as a state representative on the Finance Committee, and then I ran in the middle of a global pandemic for Hamilton County. It was a crossroads for many families. First thing I did was have partnerships. We had $158 million, but no one knew how to access it. I came to Waycross Media and created a relief-a-thon that we had for two hours where people could know where to go, where to find help, and we helped over 250 families live on television from right here. The second thing I said is, we need to do business different as we go into this new era where you can push a button and get your groceries come to your house, you can push a button and have your food come to your house. Hamilton County is a big county, and so I said, let's have a mobile unit called the 513 Relief Bus. And that bus was just in Forest Park this past week with a senior citizen day with over 600 senior citizens connecting to medical services at no cost and connect them to economic services. That bus now has helped over 20,000 people throughout Hamilton County. It's a new way we're delivering services directly to the people, and I'm very excited about that. We did $100 million in rental assistance when people needed most, senior citizens, $2 million fund to help them fix up their house and be able to stay in the house they have. But I'm also a fighter against high property taxes. And I've asked for the governor to put a freeze on property taxes among senior citizens in my state of the county as the president of the county commission. I also took on, we had the Bengals deal where we were supposed to get 30% rebate. It never happened in 20 years except three times, and it happened when I first got elected. And we got it in in 2021 for your 2022 bills, and I'm going to continue to do that. So if you're a senior out there, a homeowner out there, no more leaving you behind. It's One Hamilton County, and that's why I'm running for reelection.
Thank you very much. Now, once again, if you're watching this program live on Tuesday, October 1st, you as a local resident can submit your questions to the candidates. Email it to live@waycross.org. And again, address your comments to the fact of an answer can be responded from all the panel we have here. Now, the questions must be phrased for all the candidates to respond. Email those questions, include your resident's name and address and community. We will only read your first name and street. Now, we begin the two-minute questions. And we begin with Mr. Dupler, and here's the first question. Why do you want to serve as Hamilton County Commissioner?
I like to serve as Hamilton County Commissioner just to represent everybody and to bring an outside view to the county government. I'm not a career politician. I'm just a regular citizen like everybody else. And I think I have a lot of questions about why things are done the way they're done, and I won't go along to get along or just do things because that's the way that they've always been done. I would like to make Hamilton County a center for more freedom and more free-market activity. And I'm really interested in renegotiating the stadium deal with the Bengals. Fundamentally, I don't think that the government should be owning entertainment properties like stadiums and arenas. And I also understand that the MSD deal is very important with the consent agreement with the EPA. And I would like to just help bring some fresh ideas and also have to be diplomatic because Libertarian Party is not as big and popular as the Democratic and Republican Parties. So I have to listen to both of them and make sure that everybody works together.
Mr. Kaler, what's unique or why do you want to serve as the Hamilton County Commissioner?
Well, first of all, I wanted to run because I believe in democracy. I didn't want a seat to go unopposed in this election. So I had friends from the GOP who called me and said, Adam, we'd love for you to run. We think you have the qualifications to run. You know, I've got multiple businesses. Luckily, I know how to delegate, so I've got, I've got those operating pretty well. And I love Cincinnati. I went to college in Pittsburgh. I had a big Bengals sticker on the back of my car, got broke into twice. They hate me in Pittsburgh. I have a competition in me with every other city in this region, every other county in this region. I want to see Hamilton County do well. Over the last decade, Hamilton County's only had a 2% growth rate. Neighboring counties, some of them have had upwards of 22% growth rates. Personally, I grew up in Price Hill. A lot of people that I grew up with have moved. They've moved to Indiana, they've moved over to Northern Kentucky, or they've moved up to places like Mason. I want to see those people come back. I want to create an environment in our county that feels safe. I want to create an environment where people feel like they can start a business, where people feel like they're supported, where young people have a future and have a vision for their lives. I want to create that type of environment, and I want to out-compete all the other regional cities we have. We're losing business right now. We're losing convention business to places like Indianapolis. You know, Columbus is growing at a, I think, 4.5% growth rate. The city of Cincinnati's only growing at a 2.5% growth rate. And I know we're not talking about Cincinnati in this race. We're talking about Hamilton County. But when Cincinnati gets a cold, the county sneezes. So I want to produce productive citizens. I don't just want to give them a fish. I want to teach them how to fish. I did that myself, grew up in extreme poverty, and I had to figure things out on my own. There are so many resources and assets that the city provides that I don't think we get in front of people in the way that we should. So I want to be able to do that and open up these opportunities for young people so they don't become criminals down the road.
Ms. Reese, why do you want to serve as Hamilton County Commissioner?
Hamilton County has been in existence for 234 years, and most of the time has only been one party, men, that have been running the county. What I've seen in my research as I've gone down there fighting for the people every day that too many people have been left behind. People have had taxation without participation. They need someone with experience, knows how to get things done, but not afraid to stand up, be transparent, and bring the argument out to the people so they can see everything. And so, I'm running for that reason, One Hamilton County, 513 Relief Bus, taking county services to you instead of you trying to find the services. 20,000 people have been helped, $95 million plus for safety, the most we've ever had for safety. We've had the most structurally balanced budget, but the most diverse budget in history under my leadership as president. And affordable housing is also, we put $40 million, the largest ever, to affordable housing. But we didn't stop there. We said, we want new affordable housing, but most importantly, we want you to be able to afford the house you already have. And so, I put together, was able to lead a $6 million fund to help people stay in the house that they have. We also have an office of youth that I initiated. We never had one. Guess what? We've now helped 27,000 youth with training, development, jobs, opportunity, entrepreneurship training. We're going on the right track, but I'm going to not, I'm not going to let up. I'm going to put the, I'm going to put the fire to it, and I don't care who is there. We're fighting for the people first. And I'm running for Hamilton County Commission because I can't get it done in one term. A 234-year system cannot be turned around in one term, but we're going in the right direction. So I would ask for people to, for their vote, and I'm for One Hamilton County, all of the municipalities at the table getting equal opportunity, equal representation. And we also have an office of small business, which I will talk about later.
Ms. Reese, why do you want to serve as Hamilton County Commissioner?
So, yeah, I think people want somebody in public office that is a collaborator, somebody that's thoughtful, somebody that's willing to dig in and do the work. And so, I'm going to give just a little bit of background on the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition, of which I am the chair. So this is this great collaborative approach. It's prevention, treatment, law enforcement, public health, hospitals. We're all sitting at the table together to try to save lives in this community related to addiction and get people into treatment, and also reduce the stigma related to addiction so that we can get people to step up and say they want to participate in recovery. All right, so that's the frame. So as you think about some of the issues that have hit the county since I've been there, when I walked through the door, we had an overcrowding problem in the jail. And so, we said to ourselves, all right, we need more capacity. How do we build that capacity? And instead of building 90 separate jail cells, we said, what is a better approach, a smarter, more thoughtful approach to address the issues that we see in the jail, which are issues related to mental health and addiction? And how do we adjust what we think and look in that frame? And so, we went into Kenton County down in Kentucky. They've got a dormitory-style setting for individuals in that jail, and these are folks that voluntarily go into a recovery pod, and they're provided with services and support so that when they leave the justice center, they've got the resources they need to not come back. It's smart, it dignifies the people there, and it saves the county money. So I think people in this county want somebody that's going to sit down and really think through issues, and it's all about the partnerships, too. I mean, we're partnering with the sheriff to do that. We got money from the state and the capital budget to do that. So it's all about partnerships and a collaborative approach to solving some of these big issues that face Hamilton County, because we are really the safety net services of the county. And so, I think we owe it to the people of the county to give our all when it comes to these positions.
To show you where your input is important, we already have an email. Thank you very much. And we will have Mr. Kaler be the next question. This is from Caitlin on Hamilton Avenue. How can you support MSD's goal of removing excess waste from the waterways in Hamilton County? Mr. Kaler.
I think the relationship with the EPA is going to be really important, I think, involving organizations like that in collecting data and using data the best that we can and looking at all these waterways. I mean, we've got an aging infrastructure that needs a lot of attention. We have to put as much resources and understanding into that. We can't just throw money at problems. We have to use data, quantifiable data, that we can use. And also, let's go out to some of these other places. I mean, we have a wonderful MSD program. We have some of the cleanest water in the United States here in Cincinnati. And we need to collaborate, and I'm sure, you know, we have been with the current county commissioners, but we need to go out and we need to collaborate with other areas, maybe not even just in the United States here, but other cities, other counties, and find out what they've been doing as well to help clean up the system that we have now.
Ms. Reese, how can you support MSD's goal of removing excess waste from the waterways in Hamilton County?
Yeah, I think MSD is one of those prime examples when I say a 234-year-old system that has been going in the wrong direction, the way that it is designed today, where the city does all the management and we do the funding, and it creates kind of a tug-of-war, if you will. We are in court, so I can't say a lot, we had to sign a gag order, but what I will say is that there has to be a balance with getting these projects done and a consent decree that's an unfunded mandate, but at the same time, the ratepayer who is telling me, I just can't afford, grandma just can't afford to pay extra right now when they're trying to hold on to their house. So we have to have a balance, and I am not supportive of rate increases at this time, at a time when homeowners are already tackling and with the tax increases. We want to make sure we are affordable as well. You know, I don't want to price you out of Hamilton County. I want to price you in. And so, we also have had ARPA money that we were able to get, it's one-time money, and our board decided that some of this money has to go to some of these projects, stormwater projects that we have invested in. I believe it's almost $4 million so far in grants that we have done throughout the county. So we're doing that. We still have to work back and forth with, this MSD structure has to get under control, but we can't do it alone. Has to be the city, the county, and the court agreeing to come. In the meantime, I don't want grandma not able to make it because we're going up on rates. So I'm, I'm not in favor of going up on rates right now, but I am in favor of using our ARPA dollars to start some of these projects, but also, there are also some other projects in the pipeline within the budget that does not create a rate increase at this time.
Ms. Dreehouse, how can you support MSD's goal of removing excess waste from the waterways in Hamilton County?
So we have been doing this ever since I've been on the county commission and before I got there, of course, because we're under this consent decree. As Commissioner Reese said, it's an unfunded mandate from the federal government, and so we have to abide by that. And so, each year, we have a budget, and it kind of splits in half, where half of the money, or its ratepayer dollars, go to the consent decree. And so, these are projects that are meant to separate the stormwater from the sewage and keep all of that out of the streams. And then, the other piece is about asset management, because we've got a very old system in some, literally falling apart in some communities, and so we need to pay attention to that as well. And so, there is this tug and pull between these two priorities as we move forward and trying to keep the rates as low as possible at the same time. And so, we kept rates flat for the first five or six years that I was on the commission. We have started to gradually, very gradually, increase those rates only because we need to fund the consent decree. As I said, it's an unfunded mandate, and we're required to do so, but we're trying to keep those as low as possible so as not to impact the ratepayers to the point where they can afford, can't afford these, and they're like 3%. They're very low. But the fact of the matter is, we have no choice. And so, the good news is, we're getting some of the waste out of the stormwater and keeping it out of the streams. The challenge is creating that balance with the ratepayers to make sure that we're not pricing people out of their homes. And so, it is a difficult equation, but we're trying to address it. We have an annual budget from MSD. They're about to come in, I think, next week or the week after to present their budget. And so, they always ask for more money than we are willing to give, and so we've already started that dance with MSD. As Commissioner Reese said, we own it, they run it, but we'll try to keep those rates down as low as possible and keep that budget as low as possible.
Mr. Dupler, how can you support MSD's goal of removing excess waste from the waterways in Hamilton County?
I have to admit, I've been liking a lot of the answers from the other candidates. I think we just need to work together with all the parties involved. When it comes to the rates that we're paying, I think that we should look at more creative ways of paying the rates. There's a very high base rate for the removal of sewage, and if people were able to save money by having a lower use without a high base rate, that would definitely help people who are hurting financially, and then those who are using more water, they would have maybe a higher rate versus their high base pay, and that would bring in the additional funds for the project. But I'd like to hear ideas from all sides, all communities. I like the idea of looking at other cities that have had similar problems. Our problem is larger scale than some of the cities, I think it might have been Minneapolis, but we ought to look at all of our options, not necessarily jump on any of the newest green technology, but technology that is proven and works and is practical for the city.
Once again, we want to thank Caitlin on Hamilton Avenue. Again, if you're watching this program live, we're live. On October 1st, local residents are invited to submit your questions. You can do so by live@waycross.org. Now, our next question. What's unique about your skills and experience that would bring you to Hamilton County as a commissioner? And we begin with Ms. Reese.
Yeah, I have a vast amount of skills. First, I'm a graduate, proud graduate of Cincinnati Public Schools, Withrow High School International Studies Academy. I come from a civil rights background. I went, turned down a scholarship to Brown University and went to Grambling State, HBCU, down in the south, the belly of civil rights. I have grown up in a family-owned business. Marketing is my expertise, my communications degree, but I've had a lot of experience both in the private entrepreneurial side, but also in the public sector side. And so, I think those things coming together with my experience of being on Finance Committee at the local level, at the state level, being the Deputy Director of Tourism, having to market all 88 counties, marketing the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, and saying, wait a minute, we can have a Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. So now, we've got the Lakefront and the Ohio Riverfront and bringing tourists, we've got 37,000 who've come in for the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame that has won numerous awards. In addition to that, I think my perspective of coming from the ground level, I come from the bottom up and not the top down, and I'm able to talk the language, I'm able to read in detail the contracts, but at the same time, I can explain it to the everyday citizens so that they can walk along with us and be a part of this process. I'm also one that is results-oriented, whether it's the MLK exchange and working across the aisle with a Republican, with a Republican governor to get the Martin Luther King Highway Exchange done in record time, bringing the hospitals, getting there quicker and technology that is there, whether it's a futuristic approach that I have with technology, as I talked about the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, augmented reality, or whether it's creating the Small Business Office of Small Business for the first time in Hamilton County, because I understand you can't be a county of the future if you don't have strong small businesses. So I bring all of that, of 30 years of experience to the table, and it's diversified. And so, I think that makes me a great county commissioner.
Ms. Dreehouse, what's unique about your skills and experience that you would bring to Hamilton County as commissioner?
Thank you for the question. So I was a small business owner before I got into politics, and I think that my small business experience lends to the way I approach things in a very pragmatic way, because as a business owner, you're just trying to get stuff done. And you need to look at problems and be able to problem-solve pretty swiftly as a business owner, because you just don't have time to fool around. And so, I did that for 13 years. I had a couple of businesses that I was owner-operator, and then I went into legislature. And so, for eight years, I served the 31st House District in the legislature, and in the legislature, I became the ranking member on the Finance Committee. I was the first woman ever to have a leadership role in the Finance Committee, and I'm proud of that service. But in that role... role, I was able to collaborate with the Republicans to get a lot of things done. And I passed a lot of bills in the minority when I was in the legislature to the benefit of the district that I represented. Beyond that, then, I have been a county commissioner for eight years, and so have a depth of understanding about county issues that I think does serve the district well or the county well. I understand the intricacies of the Bengals lease. And I'm going to touch on that for just one second, because I think it's important. People are, it's very top of mind, because we just had a presentation about what a vision of the stadium could look like. It's the largest county asset that we have. And you have to be able to say to that, okay, that's nice, but what can we afford? And what are the partnerships by way of the funding? It can't be what we did last time, where the taxpayers were in for like 95% of the funding, but rather, it has to be a split with the NFL, the team, the state of Ohio, and the county. We are not raising taxes to fund anything new in the stadium. And so I think it takes that kind of approach as a small business owner, as a person in the legislature that was always able to work across the aisle to get things done. I mean, that's always my approach. I mean, I'm pragmatic, and I'm a problem solver, and I think that benefits the county.
Mr. Dubler, what's unique about your skills and experience that you would bring as Hamilton County Commissioner?
I think part of what makes me unique is that I've not been in politics before. I'm not a career politician. And I'll have a view from the outside and a view as a resident. And I have to be able to learn and understand and present all the information to the residents in ways that anybody can understand. My background is in computer science and engineering. I just think very logically and rationally. And I've taken up a hobby of studying economics. So I'd like to put certain ideas of, you know, smart sizing things and, you know, making Hamilton County better for the people and the private residents and small businesses without an overburdening in county government.
Mr. Kaler, what is unique about your skills and experience that you would bring to Hamilton County as commissioner?
I've accomplished a whole lot in my life, considering where I came from and, you know, building a company from essentially scratch, turning around, selling that, hundreds of employees, thousands of employees over the years now. Outside of that, owning a coworking space, owning an advertising marketing agency, digital advertising marketing agency, building large-scale technology solutions for our clients, mostly web-based solutions. I would like to bring those kinds of innovations and those kind of technologies to Hamilton County. So many times, and I think, you know, our audience would agree, you go to the county website, a lot of the times, they look outdated. It's hard to find things. You know, our website, I wouldn't say is the worst right now, but there are things that I would love to implement. Think about ideas, like, I want to be able to log into the county's website. I want to be able to see a simple infographic. I'm also a designer. A simple infographic about where my money is going, a pie chart, for instance. I click on one of those things. It brings up the program that my money is funding. I want to find out what that did. I also want to find out, are there any KPIs in place that these people hit that belong to this department? And are they hitting these KPIs with my tax dollars? Are they falling short? I want to be able to quantify as much stuff as possible. I'd love to audit the county in general and then put these KPIs in place, key performance indicators for these different departments in place, so that taxpayers have a more transparent understanding of where their tax dollars are going and if they're being used effectively or not. We've got a problem right now. We've got an affordable housing problem. How are we going to build more houses when we don't have electricians? We don't have plumbers? We don't have HVAC technicians? Well, there's a bunch of people out there, these baby boomers who are trying to sell their businesses right now. They can't find buyers. They don't have a secession plan. I'd love to put something in place so young people can purchase these businesses and we can, at the county, supply them with the down payment money to go on a place like Biz Buy Sell and purchase a cash-flowing business in lieu of having to go to college. There are opportunities out there that I'm future-thinking that I think we could take advantage of.
I know the two minutes go very quickly, but our next question, again, two minutes, and we begin with Ms. Treehouse. What do you view as the top two issues facing Hamilton County today?
I spoke about this in my opening statement. I think making sure that services can be rendered to the constituents of this county is number one. Having a budget that's structurally balanced is critically important to that. And so I think we need to keep our eye on the ball when it comes to delivering services, because again, you know, people call 911 operators on the worst day they're having of their lives. And so you want somebody that's got a lot of experience and understands what you're talking about when you make that call. You want sheriff deputies in the jail that have some experience in that position so that they're safe and the inmates are kept safe. You want people on the doors for people that are experiencing instability in their families to be able to evaluate that situation and remove a child if it's unsafe. So these are critically important positions of the county. And without a structurally balanced budget, we're not going to get there. And so I feel like that has to be the number one thing that a county commissioner has to keep an eye on. And so the other ones, I mentioned the Bengals earlier. I think that is an important issue. I didn't talk about the lease. As everyone knows, the lease is not great for the taxpayers. And so we will be working to manage that situation, to talk to the Bengals, to get a lease that provides more revenue for the county. Right now, the Bengals are getting almost all the revenue. And many people don't think that's fair. It's not a fair situation for taxpayers. And so I think that's looming, that's on the horizon. I do think there are opportunities, though, that are also on the horizon. We are converting or renovating the convention center. That's going to draw in so much economic activity into the city of Cincinnati and Hamilton County. That project is huge. It's a $200 million project, and we're working in collaboration with the city. I love it when people say the city and the county don't work together. Simply not the case, especially when it comes to something as big as that. And then we reconfigure that whole convention district so that we bring energy to that space, create revenue, and then we have revenues that are available for other kinds of projects.
Mr. Dubler, what do you view as the top two issues facing Hamilton County?
I think the top two issues are to make sure to not overburden taxpayers and also to run a lean government, setting a good example, not getting into debt. You know, I know they say the budget is structurally balanced by like a balanced budget with no debt, and to focus on just more of the basic services that everybody needs, the police and the justice center and the sewer system, and not get too involved in stadiums and grants to developers and things like that. I really just want to, yeah, part of looking out for the taxpayers, I think that the commission should have considered a reduced renewal in the tax levy instead of just a flat renewal. Everybody that I have talked to is facing an increase in property taxes with the recent revaluation. So everybody's property values go up. The mills stay the same, but that means the amount you pay in taxes is going up. So if the mills for the new levies would have been reduced somewhat, that would have relieved some burden for the taxpayers while still bringing in a great amount of revenue due to the new higher values of homes. Thank you.
Mr. Kaler, what do you view as the top two issues facing Hamilton County?
Well, I've been in the city my whole life. Crime is definitely a problem. It continues to be a problem. I grew up in Price Hill. I was out here in the streets. I've been jumped more times than I can even remember. Things aren't getting any better. I live in Mount Auburn, close to Inwood Park. You've got a homeless population living in the park right now. I've witnessed people shooting up drugs in the park. There's kids around there. You've got, I had a bullet come through my bedroom window, right next to where I sleep, probably three months ago. My neighbor Shorty, she's sweeping up bullet shell casings from in front of her house because the night before, someone's house got shot up, catty corner from ours. I've got drug dealers on Vine Street that have been there ever since I was a kid. I just don't know why we can't fix it. Jim Neal's a good friend of mine. He's running for Hamilton County Sheriff right now. He assures me that there are solutions. We can get more creative with what we do. And the county sheriff is the number one expenditure in county government. So how do we get more efficient with the county sheriff's office, work with the Cincinnati Police to solve some of these crime issues? And I can only speak for somebody who's lived in the city my whole life. But a lot of the other things we spend money on as county commissioners tie back to crime, the mental health issues. And they go back into the schools even. I mean, Cincinnati Public Schools has a 19% college readiness rate and a 43% truancy rate right now. As county commissioners, we can't necessarily run the schools, but we can hold them accountable in some way. We can go down there. We could talk to them. Because the money we're spending, the problems that happen in the school system, and I'm a person who went to Cincinnati Public Schools, they stem from the school system. The second biggest problem I see is economic development. We have to help some of these young people. We have to turn the population that has been ignored in this city for so long, turn those people into entrepreneurs. They shouldn't be outside the back of my house selling drugs. Those are entrepreneurs. They should be out there starting businesses. They should be supporting their communities, and they should be helping the people of Cincinnati and boosting our GDP in this region.
Ms. Reese, what do you view as the top two issues facing Hamilton County?
Hamilton County is a 234-year system. And we're in here trying to clean up a lot of the mess that's been going on for so long. You can't clean it up. I can't clean it up in four years. I need more time. With that, though, we have to get results. And I don't think it's just one issue. I don't think it's just two issues. The Bengals deal, I'd love to get, I need 20, I need 20 minutes to get into that deal. They signed, the former commissioners signed away the future taxpayers forever. We're talking a 20-plus year lease. We're talking 95%. We've got to pay everything, and only 5% of the Bengals pay. We're talking 98% getting all the parking, all the revenue that's coming in. We've got to have somebody that's tough enough, that's going to read it and going to stand up. And then more importantly, that I have started, let's be transparent. People voted for these stadiums, but what they didn't vote for is the lease that was done behind the curtains. I'm saying come from behind the curtains. And we have been more transparent so people see the things when we see it. We do have to have a diversified funding model. The NFL, if you can tell us not to have a watch party, you got to put some money up. And I'm talking big money. I met with the governor, told the governor, we can't give all the money to Cleveland. We've got to get some money here in Cincinnati. We can't just get the crumbs. The third thing, privately, they've got to put some money and some skin in the game. Fourth, we must have a revenue sharing thing. And then fifth, this has to be the people's stadium, meaning we got to have more concerts, more activities, where the people can come into this stadium. This is not a private stadium. This is a public stadium, and it belongs to the people. But the way the contract is written, we can't even get into the place without talking to the Bengals. We can't manage the place because we gave that away. We can't even put digital billboards up because they own that too. So we're in a deal that allows them to go another five-plus years with the same stadium. And you've got to have some people that's tough enough and understands the lingo to stand up on a deal like this.
Mr. Dubler, what steps can be taken to help small businesses?
I think steps that can be done to help small business is, if we reform zoning, ease zoning, if there's more mixed-use areas, I don't think that really the government should be telling people what they can and can't do on their property. If an old industrial building, if somebody wants to buy it and change that to a residential area, they ought to be able to do that with not a lot of roadblock from the zoning commission. And I think that we could probably strategically look through codes for the county, keep the ones that make sense for safety and health, and roll back ones that are in the way of small businesses and entrepreneurs. People ought to be able to start up their own business out of their own home. It's called cottage industry. You know, if you do too much business activity, you start running afoul of the zoning laws and some of the other codes and regulations. So I would like to trust the residents to do what they feel is right. There's no way that, as a commissioner, I can tell them what they should or shouldn't do on their own property. So I would just, you know, put more power into the citizens' hands instead of the county government.
Mr. Kaler, what steps can be taken to help small businesses?
Well, everything the Libertarian just said is going to help for sure. Like, you'll often see me on the side of Libertarians when it comes to small business ownership. Small business ownership is the lifeblood of any city of any county. If we can't support small business owners, then we're going to be out of business. Businesses have been moving. They've been leaving Hamilton County. They've been moving, like I mentioned earlier. It's not just people. It's wealth. It's businesses. They're leaving. They're going to Northern Kentucky. They're going to neighboring counties. Like I said before, there's been a 22% growth rate in some of these neighboring counties. Why is there such a dramatic growth rate in some of those places? It's small business owners. These are people with wealth, people with assets, people with resources that can leave. What do they leave us, right? We have a failing school system. We have kids that would love to be entrepreneurs. I didn't know I wanted to be an entrepreneur. I knew I wanted to be a designer when I was a kid. I didn't know that I would eventually go into this. I didn't know the first thing about becoming a business owner. When I was growing up in Price Hill, nobody ever sent me a brochure, a flyer, hey, do you have a kid in the household that's interested in starting a small business? Here are the resources we have available in the county. I don't want to have to go to the county website necessarily to find us. We need to find the entrepreneurs. We need to go into the schools. We need to set up vocational programs like we used to have at places like Western Hills High School. We need to connect these young people with these aging business owners who own profitable businesses. I'll give you an example. I was on Biz Buy Sell the other day. There's an HVAC business on there with $1 million a year in revenue, selling for 1X their revenue. They're selling for $1 million. The net revenue from that business is over $600,000 a year. $600,000 a year. If he doesn't find a buyer for that business, that business goes away. We don't build affordable housing. We need young people in these vocational programs, and we need to be able to give them the opportunity to purchase these businesses from these aging boomers, or these businesses are going to disappear, and we have no affordable housing.
Ms. Reese, what steps can be taken to help small businesses?
Well, I appreciate, we heard a lot today, and I can't do rebuttals, but I will have to say there's certain things. That's why I want to teach people what county government does, because a lot of things are state laws that we got to do, and some things we can't go into other jurisdictions. But let me tell you about small businesses. I grew up in a small business. I saw my parents take an empty warehouse and do a mixed-use development with all of their own savings and no government help at all. And so I understood the importance that small business can't just be a program. It has to be real. So a couple of things that we've been able to do to get some things done is, one, I initiated us having an office of small business. We've never had one. We have one now. Number two, when we got the ARPA money, and small businesses were struggling to try to stay open, restaurants couldn't do it. They didn't know where to turn. We did 17, over $17 million, our board did, in grants to help small businesses to stay open and keep fight. In addition to that, we now have a program we're funding for business districts, a facade program, that will be available to various municipalities to upgrade their business districts. And in fact, just this month, we want to hear from young entrepreneurs. We're hosting the first-ever pitch night, something I came up with, to hear these entrepreneurial ideas. So I think we're heading in the right direction. But as it relates to inclusion of minority businesses, when I got elected, one quarter, we only spent $1,400. Zero with women-owned businesses, minority, all groups, $1,400. I said, are you crazy? We now have a program, $70 million. We're doing more contracts, and we had a small business day that I initiated at Sharonville Convention Center for two years, 2,000 businesses, not a leaflet fair. We had a deal room where you sit down. We talk about contracts. We have available services that you have, and we've been connecting thousands of small businesses. We're heading in the right direction. We just hosted Forbes, who came here with their 30 under 30, right here in Cincinnati with jobs and technology. We're going in the right direction. But we had to have an office of small business whose job it is to make sure we're connecting, moving forward, and become the number one county for small businesses.
Ms. Treehouse, what steps can be taken to help small businesses?
So I want to say that as a former small business owner, what would have helped and did help me as myself and my partners went through that experience was a partnership with government to make sure that we were working in tandem with each other instead of opposed to one another. And so when we opened, I owned a coffee house. When we opened the coffee house, we called the health department in and said, hey, what do we need to do to open this business and not have you come in and say, we're not doing something correctly? We want to be in partnership. And they came in, and we created that partnership. And I do think that's the posture, the attitude for the government to say, we are not in here to ding you for something, or rather, to shut you down. But rather, we need to be partners with businesses and make sure that they've got what they need by way of infrastructure, by way of, you know, some of these health department requisites to carry on, you know, to do what they do as entrepreneurs. And so we also, and Commissioner Reese mentioned it, during COVID, we did a lot for small businesses because they were, many of them were shut down. Most of them were shut down. And so they were struggling, and many of them were going to shut their doors. And so we priorit, along with rent relief or eviction relief, we made sure that small businesses were a priority for us. We kept a lot of businesses open during COVID through some of that temporary funding, and they're open today, and they've made those adjustments. The other thing to know is that we've got an organization called Alloy, it used to be called 3CDC, and actually, Mr. Kaler mentioned this, where we incubate small businesses, hundreds and thousands of small businesses in this incubator in Norwood, to make sure that they've got the tools that they need to move out of that incubator into the community and have a thriving business. So it's peer-to-peer support. It can be business coaching. It can be about the books. It can be about relationships. It can be about how to set that up. We've been doing this work for years and very successfully have moved into a space where we've helped thousands of businesses launch in Hamilton County. And so we do that in partnership with Ready Cincinnati, which is the larger businesses, but we're focused on trying to help all measure of business. businesses, but we're focused on trying to help all measure of business succeed in the county.
Now, time for your two-minute statement. We begin with Mr. Kaler.
Guys, I would love for this county to beat out every other county in this country. I want to see a growth rate 10-plus in the next four years in this county. I want to see young people feel like they have the opportunity to succeed, that Cincinnati and Hamilton County is a place where you come to build a business, like Commissioner Drehouse just mentioned. Alloy Ventures, that was our first, technically, our first office for our business, outside of the Panera Bread Up in Clifton that we started in. But Alloy Ventures, great resource. I would love to see as much given to that organization to help them grow and help them reach out to more entrepreneurs. I've got friends there. I used to work in an ad agency. We did work for the Over the Rhine Chamber of Commerce. We did work for 3CDC, actually did their logo, did the website for HCDC when they first started out. So I've kind of been in there early and watching some of these programs and some of these organizations grow into what they've done, what they've grown into now. My only fear is that we're not preparing young people the right way. I'd love to help give young people a path, because all the tax dollars you guys are spending, the majority of tax dollars are going to support programs for folks who've never found their path. They're going to the jail system. They're going to the sheriff's office. They're going to mental health. They're going to a lot of the things that are avoidable. We can't put Band-Aids on problems anymore. We have to solve problems early on, and that begins with young people, young people like me, who didn't feel like they had a path, and now I'm doing well. We've had thousands of employees. We've been able to turn some of those employees into entrepreneurs who then went on to create companies and hired hundreds of other people. Those are the types of things we need to happen. We need county commissioners who understand that, who've been through that process and know how to make that happen for other people. And if you believe that, I'm your candidate.
Ms. Reese, your two minutes of closing statement.
This is no time for inexperience. Times are too tough. When senior citizens said we needed help, I stood up and got a $2 million fund. When people said we haven't seen the services come, I helped create a 513 relief bus, and 20,000 people got help, medical help and economic help. When the youth were saying, where do we go? We have an Office of Youth I created, and 27,000 youth have been getting help with entrepreneurship programs, jobs, et cetera. When people said that we needed more funding for safety, our board stepped up and put more funding for safety. We have been there. When we said we need something new and innovative, a tourist attraction, I helped create the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame with 37,000 people that have shown up. When minority businesses said we only getting $1,400, we came back and said, uh-uh, we got a program now with $70 million. We have been about results, but you can't change a 234-year system in just one term. I need more time. When homeowners said, wait a minute, what about the 30%, I stood up and fought for it every single time. I got it once. I didn't get it the other two times, but I'm going to keep fighting. And when people say, I don't like this Bengal deal, I'm going to go to the table and be their representative, because that's who we represent when we go to the table. When veterans, their backs were turned on veterans, there are only 300 and 400 veterans, I stood up and said, no, no, no. We got to have a Veterans Day, and we had one for the first time in our stadium that we own, the Great American Ballpark, for the first time, Community Days, 3,000 veterans showed up with 70 different partners for help. I'm about one Hamilton County. I'm your watchdog when necessary. I'm going to read the fine print, and I'm going to make sure you, the taxpayer, know what's going on. But I need your help. There's a voter ID law that's in place right now. Double-check your voter ID. 158,000 people have been wiped out who should not have been wiped out. Go to the Hamilton County Board of Elections, double-check your ID, and when you double-check it and you make sure you're registered, I'm asking for your vote for Hamilton County Commissioner, Alicia Reese.
Ms. Drehouse, your two-minute statement.
Thank you. So I care deeply about this county. I care deeply about the community. I grew up in Green Township on the west side. I'm one of eight kids, moved into Price Hill, raised my kids in Price Hill, and have always been involved in the community. I was, you know, I coached my kids' soccer teams and volleyball teams and softball teams. I was a member of the Parish Council. I was on the PTA. So I was on the Community Council. So I've always been in this space where I really want to give back, because I care so deeply about the community doing well. And so now, as a county commissioner, that's just a little bit on steroids, thinking about 830,000 people instead of just one community. But I think it plays out in the way we behave and how we respond to things that are adversial or adverse, what am I?
Adversarial.
Adversarial, thank you. Adversarial, too. And so let's talk about COVID for one second, because I was the president of the commission during COVID, and that was a really rough time. And it was a time where we needed leadership, where we needed somebody to step up and say, I am going to communicate out as much as possible to the community to make sure that everybody has the information they need to make good decisions during COVID. When businesses and schools were shutting down, we let people know about that and what they needed to do to stay safe. When things were opening back up, we were in constant communication with the community. Every single, we were doing daily briefings with the Health Commissioner. It became weekly briefings. Thank God, there are no briefings anymore. But we took this approach where we wanted to make sure everybody was involved. We met with all 49 jurisdictions weekly to make sure everybody was in the loop. And then, when we got funding from the federal government, said, we're not going to just do this ourselves. We're going to bring people together to help us understand what the priorities are. And so it was keeping people in their homes. It was keeping businesses open. It was making sure people had testing for COVID. They had the vaccines available to them. So you never know what's coming down the pike. As a county commissioner, we deal with all kinds of different issues, but I think you need somebody that wants to have a strategic approach, but also a collaborative approach that is trying to problem solve. And I think that's what I bring to the county commission.
Mr. Dubler, your two-minute statement.
Yes. If you're looking for an option outside of the two parties, a fresher look at government services, where people ought to be able to thrive and prosper without help from the county government. They shouldn't have to be looking to the government just to start a business. There should be enough pathways without any roadblocks that people can get up and going. You know, there's lots of different Libertarian ideas that I think I could bring to the city. I think, you know, while maybe we should definitely focus on violent crime, certain less violent crimes that don't involve a victim, that, you know, less resources, need to be focused on those types of vices. You know, I'm definitely interested in things like restorative justice, where instead of just putting people in cages when they mess up, we work with them side by side and try to get people actually rehabilitated. That's the kind of thing that might help overcrowding. Really, and just if you don't feel like you're represented by the status quo or the existing two parties, I'm your candidate.
Thank our panel for being with us this evening. To see this broadcast or other election forums, simply go to waycross.tv. I'm Kurt Radel, Waycross Community Media. Thank you for watching, and good evening.
Waycross takes no positions on candidates or issues. We conduct these forums so that our viewers may be better informed voters for the November 5th election.